The council to order, roll call.
Tahoe, Tolbert, Bussuri, Jalali Nelson, Naker Prince, Council President Bren Moen. Six present, one absent, being Council President Bren Moen, who is excused.
Please rise if you're able and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Consent agenda items three through 21 are before you for your consideration.
I believe we are pulling items 15 and 17 for separate consideration. Is there anything else people wish to pull? Seeing none, a motion for the balance of the consent agenda from Ms. Jalali Nelson. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The consent agenda is adopted as amended. Item number 15, Resolution 19-713, approving the mayor's appointment of Vicky Bakom to the Truth and Sale of Housing Board of Examiners.
I believe in this case, we just need to substitute version two and legislature.
And it's just clarifying the name of the board. It's actually just Truth and Sale of Housing Board. There's no of examiners in their title.
Any discussion on that item? Seeing none, a motion from Mr. Tolbert to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The resolution is adopted as amended. Item number 17, Resolution 19-726, consenting to Kim O'Brien performing work on behalf of the St. Paul area Chamber of Commerce in furtherance of the rice larpenter revision plan.
The nature of this item just requires that it be pulled and discussed. If folks have comments on it, is there any discussion? Seeing none, oh, go ahead, Mr. Tal.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is great because Kim been from the War Five office for a long time and been in the forefront of working in this area, northern part of Northland. So I think this could fit.
Thank you. I echo that, and I think Council President Bren Moen would issue her here, too. Take that as a motion to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The resolution is adopted. Item number 22, Resolution 19-621, approving the application with conditions per the deputy legislative hearing officer to add a liquor on sale to am closing license to the existing liquor on sale, 100 seats or less, liquor on sale Sunday, entertainment B, and gambling location licenses for Mounts Park Sports Bar LLC, doing business as Mounts Park Sports Bar. This item was laid over from April 24th.
We're still working on getting our titles of our agenda items down in all cases. Ms. Prince?
Yes, I had asked to lay this over so I could do a little bit more research, and I am now ready to move to approve this license.
Great. Ms. Prince makes a motion of approval. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The resolution is adopted. Item number 23, Resolution 19-700, approving the agreement with Bird to provide e-scooter sharing services for 2019.
And my understanding is that this item needs a little bit more time to finish up work on the contract, so I'm going to move a one-week layover of this item to May 8th. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The resolution is laid over to May 8th. Item number 24, Resolution Public Hearing 19-60, approving adverse action against the auto body repair shop license held by SNS Automotive Service Corp., doing business as Parkway Auto Body, Inc. at 1906 Stillwater Avenue.
Welcome, Ms. Scard.
Councilmember Theresa Scard on behalf of the Department of Safety and Inspections. This matter was last before you on March 20th, and you had asked for it to be laid over and that DSI staff go out and inspect the premises. Since the layover, DSI staff were out twice. They were out on April 16th of 2019. They did observe some violations. They noticed that those violations be corrected, returned on the 23rd, and observed that the violations had been corrected, so their site was in compliance.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Scard? Thank you. Ms. Prince?
I would move approval.
Motion on the table is to approve the recommendations. Any discussion?
Actually, are we approving?
Yeah.
Oh, because it's adverse action. That's a good point. Yeah, so is the motion, the recommendation was adverse action.
I believe Councilmember Bren, Councilmember Naker, members of council, I believe the recommendation was that the matter was laid over to allow the licensees to correct the violations and for DSI to inspect. If DSI reported that the violations were corrected, the adverse action would be dismissed. If the corrections were not made, SNS by the licensee, then the licensee would be subject to the matrix penalty and 10-day suspension.
So our action is to withdraw the...
Correct.
So we would move to withdraw the adverse action.
Okay.
Councilmember Naker, Councilmember Prince, that's correct. Sorry.
Great. Thank you, and thank you, Councilmember Prince, for the good close catch. So the motion on the table is to withdraw the resolution approving adverse action.
You don't need to vote on it if she just...
And it doesn't even need to be voted on. Excellent. Moving on.
Item number 25, final adoption of ordinance 19-16, amending St. Paul city charter, Chapter 802, 8.02, and 8.03 to clarify signature and petition requirements.
Mr. Tal.
Thank you. So some of the concern that came up with this one was a way to appeal or to contest and to help create a more transparent, equitable way for folks in our city who may have moved and have different addresses that's not aligned with the state. And so I've asked today if Dave Triplett, the election manager, to come in, explain the process, and so we get better understanding for the record.
Great. Welcome, Mr. Triplett.
Councilmember Naker, councilmembers, my name is Dave Triplett. I am the elections manager in the Ramsey County Elections Office, and I was asked to speak specifically to how we deal with potential improperly rejected signatures, and then making sure people are registered when we get the petition. Currently, there is no appeals process to verify improperly rejected signatures, but we believe the benefit of using the public list is that it would allow the petitioner access to review our work. Currently, state law allows us to either use SVRS, the statewide voter registration system, which we access on a desktop, and that is private. Only election officials can access that. State law also allows us to use the public list, and that's what the change in the ordinance would do, it would direct us to use the list. By using the public list, it allows the petitioners to verify our work, and any signatures that they find that they believe we improperly rejected can be brought to our attention. Currently, when a petition is submitted to you, if you find that it is insufficient, under the charter, there's a 30-day grace period where the petitioner can submit additional signatures to make their petition sufficient. During that grace period, if the petitioner has the public list and verifies that we actually did improperly reject a signature, it can be brought to our attention, and our office will look into that, and if we find that we did make an error, we will correct the error and then bring that to your attention and amend our original statement of insufficiency during that period. For voters who move, so historically, if you circulate a petition on day one and submit it on day 50, people have moved. I lived in St. Paul, and I moved a lot when I did. And what we have always suggested, and this is on our website, under our FAQs, and under our instructions to petitioners, is to also circulate voter registration cards. So if when the petitioner is in front of you and they have said, "I've moved, I'm no longer registered here," or "I used to be registered here," the petitioner can have them complete the registration card, and then when they submit that to our office, we have 10 days to update that registration legally. So by the time they submit their petition to us, that voter will already be updated and will match the address that they signed on the petition. So I will take further questions if you have any.
Great. Further questions, Ms. Prince?
Yes, I, we've received a couple of letters from Peter Butler, who is someone who has gathered petitions in the past, and his strong feeling is that the precision that is required for, that we're now stating, needs to be submitted by the petitioner in terms of if they were to accidentally transpose their address, that typically the elections office has been able to figure out what they meant and validate that signature. But I'm understanding that that would no longer be the case, that it would be rejected. If anything was wrong with the signature, if someone has a hyphenated name and they use only the first name and not the hyphenated name, that they would automatically be rejected. Is that correct?
Councilmember Naker, Councilmember Prince, you know, there is a lot of nuance to it. We believe, and in our experience, we've actually been able to find those discrepancies. So for example, if you sign the petition as Liz, but your registered name is Elizabeth, it technically does not match what you have in the registration system. But you know, if we can match your birth year and your address, and we see Liz and Elizabeth, historically, we have accepted those. Without getting into more nuance, I believe you can do that discovery work on either system. The benefit of the public list is when we submit all our rejected signatures to you. So when we submit that it's insufficient, we will also give you a list of, here's all the ones we rejected, and it was on, you know, page number 50, line five, and then the petitioner can review all the ones we rejected. If the names, in fact, say, "No, you rejected Liz, but here we have Elizabeth," we can then go ahead and make the correction. Also, as you are aware, this issue is also before the state Supreme Court, and we will hopefully get guidance on them. That is on what date we use. Do we use it when you submitted the petition to us, or do we use the registration when you signed the petition? And in terms of how timely that petition is submitted to us, if it's submitted to us two years after the voter had signed it, there's a potential that that voter could move, and that's why we prefer that you submit the voter registration cards. But to your question specifically, we believe we can find those regardless of the list we use.
And so nothing that we're doing in terms of approving this charter amendment would change that system?
Councilmember Naker, Councilmember Prince, in my experience, no, it would not. And also, in my experience, we've only rejected one petition, so the idea that there is a problem with rejected signatures, in my experience, has not been seen. But one thing we always recommend of any petitioner in the city of St. Paul is if you know you're going to circulate a petition, I would recommend, you know, contacting our office, and we can kind of review the FAQs, the process, so both parties, ourselves and the petitioner, are kind of working under the same guidelines. I think historically, because petitions are not straightforward, there has not been total clarification, and so we would encourage any petitioners to contact our office for any clarification as well, to help alleviate any of those potential problems.
Ms. Prince?
And is there any reason that we would wait until the Supreme Court deals with this before we pass a charter amendment?
Councilmember Naker, Councilmember Prince, my impression that these are two different issues. The issue that is being addressed in the change to the charter language is a different issue than what's before the state Supreme Court. We do not address that, and hence why we did not recommend addressing it in our original request for the change to the language.
You know, I think my concern here, representing in an area with so many people for whom English is not their first language, that the process of signing a petition, and even for some members of our community writing in English, is challenging. And I don't want to vote for something here that is going to make it more complicated for someone, because, you know, I appreciate the example that you're giving, and that if it's a, let's say the numbers get transposed in an address, is that a similar situation where if you could find the name and, or the hyphenated name? If it's a hyphenated name, but only one of the names is there, and you can match the birth date, that that would still be the case?
Correct. Councilmember Naker, Councilmember Prince, yes, that would still be the case, and that is part of the discovery work we would do through this process, and that's why we have 20 days, well, depending on the petition, to report back to you, because the idea is that we are going to, it is a tedious process, and we want to be exact in it. But I do share your concern. Your concern is much more than just petitions, as with registering to vote, it's with, you know, election day registration. So we are very mindful of that, and it was not our intention, our intention in this language is that it would not impact the situation that you bring up.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Tal.
Thank you. Dave, can you, is your FAQ that in multiple language? Do you have a petition toolkit that would explain the different process? And I know you mentioned folks can reach out to you, but do you have any sort of language, or do you plan to have those language on your website?
Councilmember Naker, Councilmember Tal, we will do every, any language you ask us to do. So if you would like that translated into any language, we definitely have the resources to do that. And I think outside of you asking, we can easily and will go ahead and translate our materials for petitioning into kind of our known language that we get a lot of requests for. So yes, we can easily accommodate that.
Thank you. One more follow-up question. If this charter does pass, or this ordinance does pass, what is your marketing or communication plan to educate the public about this?
Councilmember Naker, Councilmember Tal, a good question. I agree that there would have to be some communication to the public on this. I think historically, there just hasn't been a lot of discussion around petitions until they get to our office, and our hope is that through communication, social media, any engagement activities we're in, is that we can be a little more straightforward about this before any residents are circulating a petition, because in my experience, a lot of times, just knowing the ground rules will solve a lot of these, a lot of these potential problems. But I will, I will bring this up with the staff to have this as part of our engagement efforts, communication efforts, if the changes go through, because I agree that we would want to make sure that the public is aware of these changes.
Thank you.
And we can work with the city on that, if you have any specific messaging with the city that the county could not carry, so.
Thank you.
Great. Any further questions for Mr. Triplett? Well, I'd like to say thank you for being here, for your help answering our questions, and for your openness to working with us to make sure that this is not creating any additional barriers, but is hopefully making the process more clear and more accessible. So thank you.
You're welcome, and you all know how to get ahold of me, so do not hesitate.
Thank you, Mr. Triplett.
So this is a charter change which requires seven votes of the council. We don't have seven members present right now. So I'm not, if people are interested in voting on this today, I would move that this be laid over till our 5:30 portion of our meeting, when we are held over until the 5:30 portion, when we will have seven votes, but there may be other preferences around the table. Ms. Prince?
I, if we could take an extra week, I'd like to circle back to the people that I'm, I've been in communication with, because I feel like I got the answers that were reassuring to me, but I just want to make sure that my community people are in the loop.
Sure. So Ms. Prince moves a one-week layover of this item, and I know we have until May 15th, I believe, to adopt it, so that works. Any discussion of that motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The ordinance is laid over to May 8th. Item number 26, first reading of ordinance 19-1, amending Chapter 74 of the Legislative Code by enacting a new section designating St. Andrews Church as a St. Paul Heritage Preservation Site. This ordinance is laid over to May 8th for second reading. Item number 27, Resolution Public Hearing 19-117, amending the financing and spending plans in the fire department for the Minnesota Task Force One Team reimbursement from the city of Edina in the amount of $17,356.39.
This is a public hearing. Is anyone here to speak on this item? Seeing none, Mr. Bussuri moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed, and the resolution is adopted. Item number 28, Resolution Public Hearing 19-120, amending the financing and spending plans in the fire department in the amount of $700 for a stipend received from the Office of Justice Programs and accepting the gift of the cost of conference registration for Kara Hinman, Health and Wellness Coordinator, and Bridget Morales, Administrative Manager, to attend the 2019 Conference on Crime and Victimization in Brainerd, Minnesota on May 23rd and 24th.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to testify on this item? Seeing none, Ms. Prince moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed, and the resolution is adopted. Item number 29, Resolution Public Hearing 19-66, amending the financing and spending budgets in the Public Works Capital Funds for the 2019 Sidewalk Reconstruction Program.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on this item? Seeing none, Mr. Tolbert moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed, and the resolution is adopted. Item number 30, Resolution Public Hearing 19-113, approving the application of Anderson Race Management for Sound Level Variants to present outdoor music and announcements for the ALS Superhero Dash on Saturday, May 11th at Raspberry Island.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will move to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed, and the resolution is adopted. Item number 31, Resolution Public Hearing 19-112, approving the application of Church of St. Mark for Sound Level Variants to present live amplified music, carnival rides, and entertainment for Grand Ole St. Mark's Festival on Friday, May 17th, and Saturday, May 18th at 1983, 1976 Dayton Avenue.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on this item? Seeing none, Ms. Jalali Nelson moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed, and the resolution is adopted. Item number 32, Resolution Public Hearing 19-115, approving the application of the University of St. Thomas for Sound Level Variants to present amplified music on Saturday, May 25th during the graduation events at O'Shaughnessy Stadium, 2115 Summit Avenue.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on this item? Seeing none, Mr. Jalali Nelson moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed, and the resolution is adopted. Legislative hearing consent agenda items 33 through 67 are before you for your consideration.
Welcome, Ms. Mormon.
Thank you. I would like it if the council would remove item number 61 from the consent agenda for separate consideration.
Item number 61, RLHBO 19-12, Appeal of Zacharis Turner to a Notice of Condemnation Unfit for Human Habitation Order to Vacate at 1569 Stillwater Avenue.
Ms. Mormon.
Vice President Naker, what we're looking at here is a kind of a complicated situation. The certificate of occupancy is required for all non-owner occupied properties in the city of St. Paul. In this particular case, it was discovered that this was a non-owner occupied property and that the owner occupant was deceased. The police department made a referral to the fire certificate of occupancy program. They were not able to gain access to inspect the property, but they did issue orders that the property required a certificate of occupancy. In the legislative hearing, the son of the deceased owner was present, Mr. Turner, and he indicated at that time that he would like to continue to live there, at least through the end of this year. The situation is complicated in most situations like this, where we have an owner who has died, an owner who is in memory care, there are siblings who work together to be able to sort out legally, how can that continue to be that the occupant can continue to live there? Courts can appoint a conservator, for example, or perhaps they jointly go to put the property through probate, but it's a cooperative effort by the heirs of the estate. In this particular case, Mr. Turner's sister, who resides in Georgia and is the representative of the estate, the executor, is not interested in working on property issues with this. She is reported to be walking on the property, basically, which leaves the situation kind of hanging. I, like I said, I like to do layovers for this. I like to be able to work with the occupants, to be able to find a path for people to continue to live in the property, in this particular case, without cooperation among the owners and with a complicating situation of a reverse mortgage being in place that is coming to an end, and it's according to the, in his ability to continue to live there. I don't have a path where I can say a layover would be useful, or continuing this would be useful, and so I'm recommending that the council deny the appeal. The fire certificate of occupancy order say you need a certificate to occupy the property, and without that, it should be vacated. I would recommend an extension to June 1st.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Mormon? Yes, just one second. Thank you, Ms. Mormon, and come on up. Welcome, sir. Please state your name and where you live, and then...
I'm Zacha Turner, the occupant of the house of the president, 1569 Stillwater Avenue, St. Paul, Minnesota. Yeah, she's correct. It is a difficult situation, and I've tried, I've called the bank, I've asked them to give me a letter, and without my sister being here to give an extension and writing, I can't switch over to get an occupancy certificate. I would like to go and pay the money right now, but without permission from the bank to get the information, I cannot do that as well. So I'm going to catch 22. Having the money is not helping, it's having my sister agreeing to go down with me is the problem, and I don't know how to get around that situation. And I would like to stay. I have a painting I need to sell that would help me stay and renovate and everything else, but I'm stuck, and that would be the truth.
Sure.
I don't know what else I can say, but other than, I guess I have to move? I don't know. But I still have nine months to convince her to do something else, but I don't know what happens to the property. If I leave out of the property itself and leave it abandoned as far as the bank is concerned, as far as the city of St. Paul is concerned, what do I do then? If I wanted to come back? Or if I had the money, if I had my sister agreed, what do I do to come back? I don't know, because I haven't had the opportunity to discover these avenues as of yet.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your testimony. Ms. Mormon, do you want to respond to that question about if the order to vacate is issued by June 1st, and at a later point, the current occupant wanted to return, sort of where the property would be standing at that point?
If there, a couple of things were happening in there. One has to do with an owner being in a position to grant a lease, say, "Yes, you can live there." You're a co-owner, of course you can live there. There's that piece of it, and Mr. Turner would need to, as we discussed, work with his sister to be able to resolve that. The other piece is the reverse mortgage, and Mr. Turner is under the, operating under the belief that, and I don't know if this is, I don't know what the bank's rules are, but that the bank would continue to allow him to live there. The bank does not own the property. The bank has a reverse mortgage on the property, though, so it is not the owner to, for example, facilitate inspections, pull permits, or the other kinds of things that an owner would be able to do to maintain the property. be able to do to maintain the property. So this is a very unfortunate situation, and time may help to get the relatives together to be able to come to some sort of a solution where there is a clear path for occupancy, but as someone who's approved it without the representative of the state being interested in participating in that discussion, we're kind of left hanging with someone who's not the owner living in the property.
And to be clear, is your recommendation of extending till June 1st the order to vacate to give some time ideally for that reconciliation or conversation to perhaps take place?
Yeah, and if there is some resolution, there is nothing preventing someone from living in the property, whether it is Mr. Turner or somebody else, if there is resolution of the ownership, because then there would be a responsible party, and it could be an owner living there, it could be a renter, anything, so...
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak on this issue? Seeing none, a motion for Mr. Basuri to close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in opposed? Motion carries, Mr. Basuri.
Seeing the situation, Mr. Zachary's end, I would like to extend his time to June 30th to give him more time to resolve the issue. But June 30th to be the vacate date.
Okay. Mr. Basuri moves to extend the vacate date to June 30th. Any discussion of that motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The resolution is adopted as amended.
I don't believe there's anyone else here to testify, but I'm not sure.
In that case, we will hold a public hearing on the rest of the items on our legislative agenda. Is there anybody here to speak to any of the other items before us? Which were items 33 through 67. Seeing none, Ms. Prince moves to close the public hearing and approve the balance of the items. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the consent agenda is adopted as amended.
That brings us to the end of the 3:30 portion of our meeting. Is there any good news around the table? Think Council President Brennewan? Anything in Word 2?
I don't know.
No good news? All right. Seeing none, we will be in recess until 5:30. St. Paul City Council will be back. Seriously, it's comedy hour here. All right. We are back in order. Roll call.
Tao Tolbert Basuri, Jalali Nelson, Naker Prince, Council President Brennewan, seven present, no one absent.
All right. So, we are in the public hearing section of our meeting. So items number 68 through 73 are before us. For people who haven't been here before, I just want to welcome you. Thank you for being here tonight on behalf of my colleagues. We have, let's see, we have an interesting process when we are looking at ordinances in our city. We have four readings. To, at the third reading, we have a public hearing. So tonight, we have three ordinance public hearings that we will hear from public if people are here to speak to them, and then we lay the matter over for the fourth reading next week. So if there's an item that's an ordinance that you're here to speak to, it's kind of anticlimactic because we won't be voting tonight, but we do like to take public input before the evening that we vote. So those are the three, first three items before us, and then we will have public hearings on the remainder of the items, number 71, 72, and 73. When we have, when we open up the public hearing, we offer 15 minutes to both sides. It doesn't seem like a lot of time, but a lot of these issues have come before district councils, the planning commission, other commissions, and other meetings, and when you send comments into the council, we include them as part of our public record. So you might see my colleagues looking at their computers, and that is so that we can access the information that's come into us before or the record that's accumulated on that item. We'll get 15 minutes aside. When you come up to testify, if you could just please give your name and where you live, and when you're done testifying, please sign in. The ledgers, they're on either side of the council table, and I will say this because I think it happens every single week. The microphones are already adjusted, so if you come up to speak and you just, you can stand in front of them, you don't have to push them up or down or push them together. The sound will be adjusted to fit your volume and your height. So with that, let's roll.
Item number 68, Ordinance 19-14, amending Chapter 409 of the Legislative Code, establishing additional criteria for applicants to the charitable gambling eligible recipients list established under Section 409.235.
And did we have a public, or a staff report on this for tonight? All right. And this is a matter that did come before us, have a public hearing, and then was laid over. Some changes were made, and we, Mr. Tolbert requested that we extend the public hearing so folks could comment on the modified ordinance. So with that, we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the ordinance as, and maybe on this one, we'll just say if you'd like to speak to this ordinance, because I think there might be people here who are like some parts and not other parts and wouldn't exactly know where they lie on that spectrum. So if you're here to speak to this item, please stand up and maybe line up along the walls and so we can... It looks like it's you.
Janet Lawson. I live in St. Anthony Park, and I represent Shakespeare in St. Anthony Park, and I just came to say today that we are very pleased with the outcome of your more inclusive process and feel that it is a really strong solution for the kids of St. Paul, and it will expand the reach, and it does reduce the amount, but from our experience, a little money can go a long way with fledging organizations and getting them started. So we cheer your process and your conclusion.
Thank you. And thanks for testifying at our first public hearing. I think your comments really helped shape some of the changes, so thank you so much. Is there anyone else here to speak on this item? Seeing none, Ms. Naker moves to close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails. Any comments before we go to final vote? Ms. Naker?
Thank you. I just want to echo the thanks to you, ma'am, for testifying both times and for your participation in this process, and to all who gave us input, both at our public meeting, at our public hearing, at this public hearing, and via email and phone calls. I'm really excited tonight to be aligning our youth fund criteria with our values as a city, making sure that those funds are targeted to youth in need, and hopefully making sure that the pot is expanded as well so that more organizations know about the youth fund and more can benefit from it. So many thanks to Councilmember Prince, my partner in crime on this, and to the St. Paul Youth Services for all their hard work consulting with us on the project, and to everyone who's participated along the way.
Great. Ms. Nelson?
She said it all. So...
Yep.
And I think for me, it has been a really interesting learning experience, because I was aware of the fund and aware of, you know, how it was distributed, but the thing to me that was compelling is that the pot of money used to be significantly higher, maybe upwards of a million dollars annually, and now we're down to about $150,000, largely because this program was set up when Pull Tabs was only game in town. And so I think we need to keep our eye on this, it isn't a pot that's growing, and so we'll need to continue to make adjustments as the things change and maybe find other ways to fund these important programs. So thank you for your work on this. I appreciate that and for taking the extra time. I'll take it as a motion to approve by Ms. Naker.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The ordinance is adopted. Item number 69, Ordinance 19-28, granting the application of PAC Investment Holdings, Inc. to rezone property at Zero Bradford Street from I-1 Light Industrial to I-2 General Industrial at 2314 Wycliffe Street, and from I-2 to I-1 at 2285 Hampton Avenue, and amending Chapter 60 of the Legislative Code pertaining to the zoning map.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Ms. Jalali Nelson moves to close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the ordinance is laid over to May 8th for final adoption. Item number 70, Ordinance 19-29, amending Chapter 81 of the Legislative Code pertaining to the city's storm water sewer system by adding new language, providing for the creation of green infrastructure storm water management districts, and authorizing the collection of charges per payment of the capital and annual maintenance and operational costs of green infrastructure storm water management systems.
And I believe we have a staff report from Mr. Saunders Pierce.
Good evening, Council President Brennewan, council members. I'm Wes Saunders Pierce. I'm the Water Resource Coordinator for the city, and I'm really excited to be here tonight to talk about the ordinance amendments that are before you. They represent more than three years of intensive work exploring innovative infrastructure financing options for the city on key redevelopment opportunity sites, and we've been piloting this approach in parallel with development at Allianz Field and the overall Snelling Midway Planning Site. So over the next five minutes or so, I'll describe to you the concept involved with this ordinance amendment, and then some of the specifics on how it would be administered. In particular, the amendment proposes enabling language citywide for green infrastructure districts. Green infrastructure is a way to manage storm water that mimics natural processes. These districts are envisioned as areas for building comprehensive, shared storm water systems, serving dedicated redevelopment areas. The districts create amenities with these systems, using rain as a resource, again, using these natural processes to treat storm water before it's released to our downstream receiving waters. These systems within the district are publicly financed, built upfront for future development needs, and this exceeds our current approach to storm water management. Currently, developments are required to build onsite systems and structures, which they do on a project-by-project basis to comply with requirements at regional and state levels. These systems are often built underground, underneath parking lots, and they provide minimal value beyond treating storm water. There's no social or environmental benefits beyond storm water control. District, green infrastructure districts are intended to provide multiple benefits. In particular, first and foremost, allows for smarter land use because these systems are shared within a single area. This maximizes density and site flexibility, much like shared parking does. So we're relieving onsite encumbrance of structures from private development sites, but they're truly higher-value systems, partly due to the scale that's envisioned, partly due to the systems approach that's being fostered. We receive habitat benefits, air quality, urban heat island reduction, water conservation. These are things that are very typical of green infrastructure investments, and so they return higher value to the community rather than onsite systems. And it streamlines development by allowing for systems that are available. They can be plugged into directly, and they provide a known cost for development purposes. So the concept of the green infrastructure district system is they're publicly financed, they're built upfront as an amenity to the community and the development, and they provide storm water control for new private developments. As a city investment and a public-private partnership, the ordinance before you establishes the authority to collect fees for capital investment and for ongoing operation. So in particular, what's being proposed to allow these districts to unfold is a one-time capital connection charge for new development at the time of their activity, and staff have determined a standard cost for these connection charges based on real data from our community of what people have paid to build onsite systems. So it's a standard cost based on historic local real data, and this represents a fair share because managing storm water is a normal development expense. So these capital connection charges that are proposed as part of this ordinance amendment would be payable at the time of redevelopment, so at the time of building permit, and there is the flexibility that they could be assessed if the property owner did not want to pay a one-time charge upfront. So in addition to the capital charge, there is an ongoing annual operation charge, and these charges are determined after a system within a district is designed, so we know exactly what's there and what the needs are to maintain that system. And the ordinance proposes to fund these system operations within a district using a combined approach within the authorities of Chapter 81's citywide revenue connection. So let me say it differently. The reason why these ordinances, why this ordinance amendment is proposed within Chapter 81 is because we already collect charges from properties citywide to help fund the city's storm sewer infrastructure. So after connection, the base annual charge that is already paid to the city by properties, the properties in a district, those funds would be dedicated to the operation program for the green infrastructure within a district. So the base annual charge would be dedicated instead of going into the city's overall program. And after connection, a surcharge to the property would also be applied. And just as the capital cost represents a normal development expense, the surcharge represents the normal burden for operating a system that a private property would pay or likely pay for something they would have to put in on their property to meet their stormwater requirements. We have proposed to cap the costs of a surcharge at 100% of the normal rate, so we have a clear ceiling. And for scale purposes, what we're talking about are truly pennies per square foot per year, both for the existing costs as well as the surcharge. So these are funds that, on the scale of investment, are on the cents, or on the pennies per square foot. The mechanics of establishing a district are contemplated in this way. The ordinance reflects that districts would be established by council resolution, so this ordinance proposal is an enabling language, and then subsequent opportunity sites would be authorized through a city council resolution. So as I mentioned at the beginning, we've been piloting this at the Snelling Midway project area, so that would probably be the first resolution to come forward underneath this ordinance, should it be passed, which we would expect to time near or at or shortly after the vote for this ordinance.
And if I could just interrupt you, and you're probably just about to say this, but I think that it's, the timeliness is particularly relevant, given Ford, and Sears, and Hillcrest, and other potential big redevelopment sites that are similar to what we did in scale to what happened at Snelling and Midway.
Yes, Council President Brett Moen, thank you for that. And in particular, as I move to conclude, the intent is for sites across the community, we would envision a master planning process, a development agreement process, and then a resolution coming forward. So for the sites that you mentioned, those are what I would say in the queue, or on deck, or we've set the table for sites like the Ford site, and many other sites, through some of the master planning process, where we've signaled the intention to have these comprehensive green infrastructure systems. And again, we have a pipeline of projects that we have seen citywide through the planning process, and that was part of the three-year engagement in developing this ordinance. That is a real and distinct opportunity for the city to create new ways to invest in these key redevelopment areas in a variety of our community neighborhoods. But in particular, in conclusion, really, the ordinance sets the table for solving these infrastructure financing challenges, where we know we have these key redevelopment sites, while also providing more sustainable outcomes on the whole. I appreciate the opportunity to provide you with a staff report. I would certainly entertain any questions, Council President Brett Moen, and council members. Thank you.
And I was thinking, as you were talking, I just confirmed this with our attorney, that we're having a similar conversation about administrative fines, like this, we're setting up a system for which to create these programs as, kind of not an ad hoc, but so that we have the ability to do this. So the structure is there, and that, of course, as you said, everything that would come out of this would come before the council, and to the community for their input, and before we finalize it. So sometimes these things are enabling language that allow us to try things. I know that the work that has been done at the Midway and Snelling site is just incredible, and hopefully will be beneficial for economic development there as well. So I'm glad and excited that we're doing this, even though it seems pretty, you know, techy and in the weeds, but it's a really important thing that we're doing, so I appreciate that. Are there questions? Mr. Tow.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Saunders Pierce, thank you for your incredible work on this, your staff, your team, Capital Regent, Met Council, the Clean Water Legacy. I'm really impressed with this project, and the way we're going to manage our water there, and I like to echo that this work is so important, setting up precedence for all the development across the city. It's just the amount of water that we'll save, we'll be using, recycling, it's one of the best in the country, and because of your work and the staff, and so we'll let you know how much we appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions? All right, thank you. Stand by. All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Why don't you come on up? I think on this one, too, we'll just kind of have it be not foreign against its thoughts. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, Madam President and council members. My name is Jacqueline Obesfeld. I'm with Mortenson Development at 700 North Meadow in Minneapolis, Minnesota. Thank you to Wes and the staff for all their hard work on this. It's fantastic. We've been reviewing the item, and have some nuances to the specific language that we will, we intend to continue to work on together. Nuances meaning, particular to Section 81.08.02, second paragraph, that begins, "The building official shall not grant any person firm." That language is what we want to make sure that we're touching base on in the future, that it's not impacting those that are already there. So for example, if a brick wall has to be replaced on an existing building, that that doesn't, in the interim of us getting underway, implicate something that was not intended for the system. So just capturing the language perhaps in a slightly different way, to watch out for current conditions, and then also just notating that the future is left to be told. The diagram that is, that we're evaluating with the ordinance is just that. It's a diagram that looks at the capturing and the reuse of the water as irrigation and such. That is a demonstration of what we believe to be true, and they're not yet tax parcels to bill against. So those are forthcoming components that we want to just make sure we're touching base on, not only the current condition, and that we'll be addressing the same stuff with the future conditions as well.
And I appreciate that. I want to just check in a little bit more with the language piece, but I do appreciate the, just acknowledgement that things change, and that we do need to. Our ordinances matter, and they're important, but they also can be changed and adopted as things, technology changes, and practices change, so I think it's worth noting. Are you suggesting that there's something within the ordinance language that you think needs to be amended? Or are you saying that as we go forward, looking at projects, how we're interpreting this ordinance?
The ordinance language really doesn't give a sense of timing of what is existing and in play while a system is coming onboard. I can't speak to the other projects, but in our case, there is, there are existing structures that will be there for a time period, that the intent of what we're doing is not to implicate someone replacing some brick, or making a tweak to their improvement that they would have to work with the building official on. And we just want to be clear that this language, if it was read strictly by staff, may mean something that was not intended.
Okay. All right. Anything else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Saunders Pierce, does you want to address the question? Sure.
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to just expand a little bit on what Jackie had said, and thank you so much for representing your point of view. It's been really beneficial to work with you as we brought this ordinance forward, and I think one of the key things that I can say to just expand on what was described is, let me paint a picture for you. At our Ford site, we have the opportunity of a site that is fully cleared of any structures. The development proposal at Ford basically is a blank slate coming forward. At Snelling Midway, where we've been working to test and pilot these ideas and this concept, that's not the case. You have a situation where you have an incredible new development in the middle of a superblock, but you have existing structures, existing businesses, that will remain for some point in time. So with the ordinance, what was being brought forward to our attention is, there could be a little bit of clarification to make sure that, you know, the intent is better represented, and the intent of the ordinance is, as new development occurs, new development that triggers stormwater management requirements, and have the opportunity to connect to this system, those are the opportunities and the projects that would be captured within this ordinance. Meanwhile, there are many successful existing businesses in the Snelling Midway district on that superblock that may not experience redevelopment, but may need to do some minor improvements on their property that would require some form of building permit. The language, as it's read, you know, to our stakeholders seems a little broad, and could use a little clarification, just to make sure that those existing businesses can make improvements to their property, knowing that those minor improvements would not require stormwater management, would not meet the intent of connecting to the system that's there. So I think the input is helpful. I think only very minor clarifications would be necessary to the ordinance in order to make sure that on this very interactive site, where we have a new development and existing developments, and we're trying to pace this along with redevelopment at an unknown timeframe, that those clarifications would really, I think, go a long way to just expressing, you know, the applicability during the implementation of the ordinance.
So are you suggesting that you could, that there's some clarifications that you could make in time for the fourth and final vote, or would this be something that we would do in the future?
Absolutely. I think that really, simply put, the phrase of projects that require stormwater management, you know, putting that into the ordinance language would just provide that clarification, so it's clear what the intent is, and I think that really just those few words would essentially meet the needs of where we're going. So I think it could be brought back for the fourth reading without any problems with that revision.
Okay. Great. I appreciate that.
Yep.
Are there any further questions for Mr. Saunders Pierce? No? Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. So do we close the public hearing? No? All right. So Mr. Tow moves to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed, and the ordinance is laid over to May 8th for final adoption. Item number 71, Resolution Public Hearing 19-75, final order approving the completion of the sidewalk network on local streets bonded by Farrington Street, Cottage Avenue West, Sylvan Street, and Larpenter Avenue.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? All right. Seeing none, I would move to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed, and the resolution is adopted. Item number 72, Resolution Public Hearing 19-110, granting the application of Mohammed Tabit for a historical use variance with conditions at 217 McCombin Avenue.
McCombin, sorry. All right, on this item, Mr. Tow, did you want to speak first, or are we going to get a staff report?
Yes, do a staff report.
All right, let's start with a staff report. Welcome.
Good evening, council members. The application that you had before you is a historic use variance for a rental hall for weddings and receptions, and the Dayton Avenue Presbyterian Church. The subject structure was originally constructed in 1888, and 1978 it received National Register designation, and in 1988 it received local historic designation. The applicant is proposing to use this church as a wedding hall, for weddings, and because they don't want to use it as a church anymore, it kicked in the need for historic use variance. Both the HPC and the Planning Commission have found that all conditions are met, and have recommended approval of the historic use variance.
Great. Are there any questions? Mr. Tow.
Can you describe the community engagement that was conducted?
Sure. So the applicant went around, talked to all the neighbors. At first, they were pursuing a reuse of large structure, which requires a petition, so they went and talked to all the neighboring properties around the church. They weren't able to get the petition requirement, and so they went and applied for historic use variance, which they didn't want to do at first, because it takes a lot longer. So there was engagement to the neighbors. It's been through the district council, made meetings there as well.
Thank you.
So if there's no other questions, this is a public hearing?
Yep.
All right, this is a public hearing. We will hear from folks that are in opposition to this application. Okay, so I know this is, if there are people here who are opposed to the application for this historic use variance, we will hear from you now. Are there people here who are in support? Great. Let's hear from you. Marcia is saying everybody in this section is in support. Okay. And she probably has had longer fingers, might be pointing over there, too. I don't know. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President and council members. My name is Matt Ditzler. My address is 1601 Hennepin Avenue, Minneapolis, Minnesota 55403. I'm here to speak on behalf of the applicant, Mohammed Tabit. In sort of a unique role, I'm a real estate broker with Engle &amp; Volkers Downtown Minneapolis, and I actually represent the sellers of this building. Mr. Tabit's representative was out of the country for most of our process due to his family commitments, and so I sort of had to walk both sides of this deal, which is why I'm here today. I will promise to be brief, so you can ask questions directly of Mr. Tabit if you want, and I know there are lots of people here who would like to speak as well. I think I said at the last hearing, it's a little bittersweet that we're here. Dayton Avenue Presbyterian Church has been around for a very, very long time, and the congregation contacted me almost a year ago in efforts to sell the property. The congregation has shrunk to about 35 people, and they can no longer maintain the property. In our discussions, the congregation was hopeful that another worshiping body would be able to purchase and take over the building. This property presents a lot of challenges for a new church. It needs a significant amount of money put into the exterior of it, and has a lot of features, or I should say, lacks certain features, that a new worshiping body would want. It's a beautiful church. It's a church with no air conditioning. It's a church without a commercial kitchen, and it's a church with two sets of bathrooms. And when we offered it for sale, we had a lot of congregations come and take a look. We had a lot of interest in it, and many of them decided, or all of them decided to pass, usually citing one of those reasons. And when Mr. Tabit came forward with his proposal for new use of the building, I'm sure they'll speak to it, but the congregation was excited, because the use of daycare, the use of weddings and gatherings are all things that have existed on this property for over 100 years. And while it's not under the umbrella of a religious institution, which is why Mr. Johnson has been so helpful through this process, that's why we're here today. And we're very excited that Mr. Tabit has the resources to sort of breathe new life into this building. And as a side note, I do want to say that he, and particularly Darlene DeCoe, who is the clerk of session of the congregation, I've done a lot of commercial deals and a fair amount of church deals as well, but I've never seen a situation where the two of them have worked so hard together to reach this common goal. As we talked about, they went and talked to all of the neighbors within 100 feet of the property. We had public hearings at the property itself, so the neighbors could come, could meet Mr. Tabit to talk about any concerns that they had. Obviously, we've met with HPC and the Planning Commission. we've met with HPC and the Planning Commission as well. So I just want to say that it's been a pretty remarkable process, and we hope that you grant it.
Well, it's a good start that it sounded like there was no one here in opposition.
That is a good start.
Which noted to the people who are here in support, right? Okay. All right. Mr. Thabits, would you like to add something?
My name is Mohammed Thabit. I live at 124 to 553 State North Stillwater, Minnesota, here. And I was planning to buy this church to use it for daycare, adult daycare, and wedding hall. And they will have a apartment for me to live in.
Wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Make sure that you sign in, and then come on up.
Thank you. Council President Brennman, council members. My name is Darlinda Coe, and I've been serving as the pastor for the past here as the clerk of session for Dayton Avenue Presbyterian Church. Representing, I'm representing the seller, but I'm not here alone. If you would indicate with a raise of hands, all the members that are here, thank you. So I'm speaking for all of us, but there may be members that wish to speak to you directly.
Can I just pause you and just say, if you do, if you would like to speak, I just, I'm watching the timer go down, so I just want to make sure that we know that you're in the queue. And if you just are speaking on behalf of your, the congregation, then that's cool too. But just want to make sure we have time for everybody if they want to...
In case I don't cover a point or didn't make a point as clearly as they would like.
Yeah. Well, and also just so that you can plan your comments accordingly, because you have about 11 minutes.
I want to echo what Matt Ditzler said about working closely with Mr. Thabit. I have been involved in the sale of commercial properties before, and usually the buyer and the seller never meet. We met a lot with, I had a tea at the church. We went door-to-door with the petition, looking to talk to property owners. We did get two-thirds of the signatures on the petition of the property owners that live in their properties. Where we ran into difficulty was property owners who rent out their properties. And either we didn't have good contact information, or we just couldn't get a response. I'm here before you, asking for your support in supporting this request and granting this variance for historic use of the building at Dayton Avenue Presbyterian Church at 217 McCubbin. As Matt said, the church has been in existence since 1874 at that location, with the building that exists there now built in 1888 by Cass Gilbert, designed by Cass Gilbert. In recent years, our congregation dwindled to the point where we really didn't have the resources to both do mission work and support that beautiful building. And our governing body suggested that we put the building on the market and move on with our, with our mission work. We did so. We hoped to find a church that would find the building a good match for their need, but we did not. And then Mr. Thabit came forward with a plan to offer daycare services for adults and for children, and to serve as a community venue for things like weddings, and also to put an apartment in there. We were pretty excited about that because Dayton Avenue Presbyterian Church has a history of community involvement. We have served as meeting spaces for polling, for voting, excuse me, for community services, for 12-step programs. We've had an adoption agency reside there for many years. And at one point, there was even a clinic in one of the rooms. So we were excited to have Mr. Thabit, and his proposal was very welcome to us. He says he will take good care of that building and has the resources to restore it to the glory it should be, in which it should reside. So we hope that you will find this acceptable and a benefit to the city of St. Paul, and that you'll vote in support of this variance. Thank you.
Thank you. And just remember to sign in. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Kathleen Vellinga. I live at 2224 Goodrich in Ward 4. Moved there in 1966. And at that time, my family chose the church at 217 McCubbin because we wanted a church that was thriving and that was linked to the community. When we arrived at this beautiful building filled with people, most of whom walked, we learned that it had been recommended five years before that that building by Cass Gilbert be torn down and a parking lot. And we said, we'll revive. We didn't, we didn't, I'm going to get over. It revived. But now it's time for the change, and I'm thrilled that Mr. Thabit has bringing the programs that he is. I've been to a lot of weddings there and a lot of other events, of course, including memorial services. I've been at the daycare. I was at the maternal infant care clinic. Now it's time for change. But we did find something about your process that I want to alert you to. The property owners that live within 100 feet of the building had to be notified. Nobody asked the renters' view, and no one has recorded the renters' view. So I want you to take note of this, because we might be back, because I think all of you represent wards where people live, regardless of whether they own the properties or not. Thank you very much.
Well, good evening, council. My name is Laurel Severson. I live at 376 St. Clair Avenue. That's also called Upper Town or West 7th. We've had, or the West End. We have many different names for us. I've lived in my house now a little over 40 years. It was built in 1882. I have made wonderful friends with historians who are just passionate about the fact that St. Paul reveres its old buildings and its history. And this church also fits into that same framework. It's an old building. It has wonderful history. It complements our state capital because of the Cass Gilbert legacy that has happened. Communities change. People go out and live in the far suburbs. They belong to the mega-churches. And the inner city is frankly closing down many, many of the very large churches that were the life of much of our city. It would be absolutely a travesty for us to lose this old historic building when we can do so many wonderful things with it. And I think our purchaser has already enumerated what those will be and how that they will improve St. Paul. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? And again, we saw a show of hands of folks who are here in support. I appreciate that. It's nice to have you down here with us tonight. So we already asked for those in opposition. There was nobody. So Mr. Tao moves to close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion prevails. Mr. Tao?
There's a question for Tony again. Tony, can you, can you please explain again, for the record, why a banquet hall would be okay at this location? And were there any parking implication that would hinder this as a banquet hall?
So with historic use variances, we're able to consider uses that wouldn't otherwise be allowed in the district. Staff has found, the Planning Commission found that this is a reasonable use of this historic structure, considering that, you know, a lot of the uses that they're proposing have been done in this church building before. It's just because they're not using it as a religious institution, this application is necessary. The parking was approved at Planning Commission, so it meets the parking requirement because the hours of the uses that they're proposing don't overlap. So the largest parking requirement is 27 spaces for the banquet hall. I believe there's 32 spaces in the parking lot.
Thank you. What I want to do is, I got a late email here, and so I need a couple of questions to follow with the district council, asking for one week layover.
One week. Okay, so we, but close the public hearing, but to have a one-week layover, just to clarify a few things with the district councils. Mr. Tao is moving a one-week layover. Mr. Basari?
I just have one question for Tony before we close. Tony, if the, it's redistrict or re-zoned, would this space still be used as a church later on?
Council President Brennman, Council Member Basari, it could be. Church is a permitted use in the district, so it could always go back to a church. What the historic use variance does is allows it to use, be used for this particular use, but it could be used as a church again in the future.
Thank you. Before you sit down again, let's make sure there's no more questions.
Sure.
Does anyone have a question for, okay. All right, you can sit. I didn't want to just do that to you like five times in a row. Get your steps in. Ms. Naker and then Ms. Nelson.
Thank you. I'll support the motion. But while folks are here, I do want to acknowledge all of you for coming out tonight and, and really appreciate, I think it should be said, how difficult this decision probably must have been for all of you. And really appreciate the courage you've had to, to let go and to do what's best for the building and to be open to this change, because it's, it's hard. So, thank you.
Ms. Nelson?
I'd also like to echo that and everyone involved in sifting through the details on the questions involved with these types of things. There's a lot to consider. And from what we've heard tonight, I feel excited and hopeful for the potential to bring new life and kind of a next chapter to this longstanding community institution. So I want to thank everyone who's been a part of that and helped ask the good questions along the way and bring up the good vision. I'm looking forward to supporting this project. And I just want to thank you all for being here tonight and, and for the steps you've taken to get us here. Thanks.
Mr. Tao?
Yeah, thank you. This is one of the locations that I have my community conversation. And so I want to thank you all for allowing me to do that. You know, I echo that, you know, the, this, the, your decision here is very bold, very progressive. While other folks are, you know, resistant to this sort of change, you're embracing that. And that's very reflective of the people of Ward 1, and I appreciate that. But I am asking for, I hope that you don't mind that I, you know, give one week layover so that I could clarify a couple of things with the district council.
Okay. And a lot of times, it's easier to have those conversations if you haven't voted yet. And so I would support that. I would also just share with people that then the vote would come back to us on one week from today at the 3:30 portion of our meeting. All right. Any further discussion on, well, I guess I will say one thing. I appreciate the comment about the petition circulation and the requirements for it. I believe they are set by the state legislature. And cities of the first class have that requirement. And it is something that our, my office looked into at one point, because in areas with high rental rates and language barriers, sometimes people weren't able to get petition signatures, even though a project was fairly benign. And so I really appreciate you reminding me, and I think all of us, of the, that particular barrier. Because sometimes there's no, really, there's no opposition. We're just maybe not asking the right people, or there's an easier way to do it, especially with technology. So I just want to acknowledge that and appreciate that you brought that forward as well. All right. That's off on a tangent. There's a motion for a one-week layover by Mr. Tao. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion prevails.
Seven, excuse me, seven in favor, no one opposed. The resolution is laid over to May 8th at 3:30. Item number 73, ABCA 19-1, Considering the Appeal to Decision of the Board of Zoning Appeals to Allow a Lot Split at 5 Heather Place for the Purpose of Establishing an Existing Carriage House as a Principal Building in Required Rear Yard and the Placement of a Detached Two-Car Garage in Required Side Yard on the Abiding Property.
So Ms. Naker, are we getting a staff report on this? A staff report? Welcome. Mr. Bennor?
Good evening, Council President, council members. Let's take a moment to get set up here.
That's good, because there's people shuffling out, so sometimes it's hard to hear.
Perfect.
So the timing is, is perfect.
Okay, good evening, council. My name is Jerome Bennett II, here to present an appeal of a Board of Zoning opposed decision regarding a lot split. Council members, before I got to get into the details of the project, I'd like to give you the lay of the land. If you can go to the screen here, thank you. What we have here is Grand Hill, which is just one street south of Summit. We have Heather Drive coming down the middle, which turns into Heather Place. And then also another key street in this project is Grand Hill, which historically was Oakland Avenue. Just a little historic fact for you.
That's Grand Avenue.
Excuse me, Grand Avenue, Grand Avenue. Yep, so Grand Hill, Grand Avenue along the rear of the property. And here we have the, the project, or the subject property, 5 Heather Place. Here it says 3 Heather Place, but it is 5 Heather Place. We have parcel A, where the existing accessory structure is located. And then here we have the principal building. So with the, the applicant is proposing to split off parcel A, as you can see listed here.
I'm going to see if the media services can just zoom in a little bit on your picture.
Oh, sure. It's tough to see.
Ooh. It worked. It worked.
Did it?
Yep.
Oh, sweet.
Ooh, okay.
Oh.
Maybe can you just, now will you just pull it a little bit?
Move it up a little bit.
Up, north.
Oh, I can touch it?
Yeah, now it's your turn.
Oh, gotcha.
Okay, thank you. Yep, it was just a little too small for us to see what you were talking about.
Okay, fair enough.
Okay.
So there's, so this is all one parcel as it currently stands right now. We have a very cool historic house that actually has a skyway built between the two main structures, 5 Heather and 7, each with their own respective carriage house. What the applicant is proposing, the owner of the property is to split off parcel B from parcel A, so that the structure on parcel A, which is the existing carriage house, now becomes its own principal building, its own single-family dwelling. And as a result of that lot split, since the carriage house served as, and I should back up a little bit, the carriage houses actually has living quarters along with a three-car garage in the property. So it's set up to be essentially was the groundskeeper's house at one point. So the person who maintained the property lived in this location, and where the living quarters and a garage, and actually a greenhouse used to be here as well. So what the applicant is proposing to do is split off the parcel of land to, which would be to this setup here. This may be a little bit easier to read.
Looks good.
Awesome. So the proposed lot split will take place right, right through this line here. So now we have parcel A would become its own separate parcel from parcel B. And as, as a result of this lot split, parcel A, excuse me, parcel B was left without any parking. So as a way to meet that parking requirement, the owner proposed to build a garage in the side yard of this property, five feet from the side yard property line. So as a part of this process, there are three separate processes for this lot split. So the first step was the lot split application at Planning and Economic Development. One in application is submitted to PED. That particular staff person sends out that lot split, that proposal to any affected department. So whether it be zoning, construction services, plan review, et cetera, to see if this would be okay with that particular department's rules and regulations. In this particular case, zoning, the zoning staff identified that variances would be required, two variances. The first one, because this, what was an accessory structure would becoming a principal structure, the rear yard setback required for that is 25 feet. So that now the, it was conforming with a three-foot side setback, now it becomes principal building, and now it's required to have a setback of 25 feet. So that's variance one. The second variant is on parcel B, which was for the proposed garage. The, any accessory structures erected in the side yard needed a side yard setback of eight feet in this particular zoning district, which is R2. So there we have a rear yard setback variance for parcel A, where the carriage house soon to be potentially a principal building. And then we also have the proposed garage on parcel B. And so that led us into the Board of Zoning opposed process, where the two variances were required. The BZ approved the variances, and that's why they're here in front of you. And one last step before the garage can be constructed is for HPC review. And any property designated historic has to meet particular guidelines, need to be met for historic purposes. So staff looks at design for as far as siding, roof, different design elements like that. And if staff feels that the particular project meets all those requirements, they can approve it administratively. And I should also mention that a lot split process is also an administrative decision made by staff. However, if the HPC staff feels that a process, a particular property is unique, or given the scale of the property, they could bring it to the HPC for review. And I'm willing to bet that this particular one would go to the HPC for review. And so the variances, again, were for the setback, side setback for the proposed garage, and the rear setback for the principal building. And if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Great, thank you. Great. Thank you. Other questions? Ms. Naker.
Thank you. Mr. Benner, a lot of the comments we received in advance in the appeal itself talked about the need for HPC review prior to granting these variances or even considering them. Can you talk a little bit about the process, the rationale for going forward with considering variances prior to HPC review?
Sure. Council President, Council Member Naker, that's a great question. And, you know, when working with HPC staff, we felt that there was no particular right order this should go. We felt that, you know, the variance for practical reasons, felt that actually that would be the best start because the variances, the variance for the garage dealt with the location and placement of the house and as it relates to zoning rules. So staff felt that it was most appropriate to determine even if the placement is going to be feasible prior, instead of going to the HPC, spending the money to get a garage designed by historic standards, which I'm sure those costs could be astronomical. And it made sense for, to determine the placement first. And then since that has received dispassion from the BZA, Board of Zoning Appeals, we felt it was most appropriate then to move on to the HPC for design review.
Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Prince.
Could you, could you put the site map back up again?
Sure.
Actually, I think the other, the other one, the line, not the satellite one, but the other.
The survey. Gotcha.
So, so the required setback was 25 feet for parcel A? And, and that's not possible because, I mean, is that required if you do the lot split? I mean, it's not exist, there isn't an existing setback. Is that what I'm understanding there?
Council President Brennemo, Council President Prince, or Council Member Prince, I, let me see if I understand the nature of your question. Essentially, because this structure has been in place for over 100 years, I'm assuming much longer than that, it has been considered even prior to the zoning code. But according to today's standards, a three-foot side yard setback would be required for an accessory structure. But because this becomes a principal building, now it must meet all the standards required for a principal structure, including rear yard. So the side yard here of 10 feet is adequate. There's only eight feet is required. It's far enough setback from the front. And also the side yard setback, can't correct me the dimension, but it is also meets that requirement as well. So really, all we're here today is to decide if a 5.1 rear setback is, should be allowed and has been in place for several decades. So.
So really the change, the change is because that becomes the primary president or the primary building?
Correct. And to that, Council President, because this, this new line is going in place, this is what, this was what preempted, this is what prompted these variances.
And is, is there a neighbor on the other side of that line?
To the, to the east.
I mean, there isn't, so there isn't any rear yard for, for that building. It has.
Council Member Prince, that is correct. So I'm going to switch back to the satellite view here if you don't mind. And we can discuss the neighboring property to the east. So the neighboring property to the east is a condominium building, 500 Grand Hill. In between the living area, the living structure, the residential structure, there's a garage that has a width of at least 60 feet. So what you have is the principal building, or excuse me, the proposed principal building, a setback of about five feet. And then you have, there's a slight hill and then you have the, the parking structure for the residence at 500 grand.
Okay. Ms. Prince.
And then looking at that again, can you show me where the plan is to build a garage on parcel B? Is, is that part of this zoning, I mean, this variance request?
Yes, that's correct. So I'm going to switch back to the, this is a little bit easier to read. Switch back to this side here. Someone's going to outline there.
I think you have it outlined on the other map, too.
Oh, I do, actually. Is that easier? I can't.
This, actually, this is easier for me to see.
But do you see, Ms. Prince, the A? I think it's.
So you see it's a G there.
A G. Well, okay, it's not easier to see that.
Yeah, it's kind of tough to tell with the red writing there. My apologies.
I think it helps to see both of them because like that shows, you know, can see how it lays into the geography, but I just didn't know if you saw that G.
Yeah, so the G right under my finger here. Yep. So that is the proposed, you know, rough, I just drew that in there. So it's the, pretty darn close, but the survey is exact. So we'll put that up. And this is the proposed garage here. So the proposed garage would have a setback from the proposed parcel A of eight feet, which is what is required. And then the side setback, and then also a setback of eight feet is required for the garage here. And the setback's only, they're proposing a setback of five feet. And, Council members, I'll just clarify this, not just in case anyone are thinking of this. And this actually was brought up in the BZA hearing that some questioned, well, why can't we just move the garage further west to meet that setback requirement? And a part of that reason, if we were to move the garage to the west, it's quite possible that it's going to be in front of the house, which then would trigger another variance. So when working with HPC staff, we felt that was the best placement for the garage. And some of you, or all of you may be familiar with the steep slope of this, of this particular property in parcel B, where if you're standing down on Grand Avenue, you can't even really see up the hill there. So, I mean, it would be impractical, to say the least, that to build a garage anywhere along this area here. And so working, as I mentioned, working with HPC staff, we felt that this was the best location to place the garage.
It's a very unusual area. You know, if you're not familiar, I'm very familiar with the area, so I like absolutely know what you're talking about.
Sure.
But it's, it's a very interesting layout. The driveways, it's, it's all.
It's pretty cool.
Very unique, very cool. Yep. Ms. Naker.
Well, and not to complicate matters further, although I feel like I'm about to, dividing into the, when the accessory structure was still accessory, the orientation of the entire parcel went according to the principal structure. So what was the front yard and the backyard and the side yard was determined according to the principal structure. When they both become principal, then it's the formerly accessory building's orientation toward the street, which makes then its front yard, its backyard inside. So anyway, it's complicated and I don't think I just made it better. But I thought I should say that.
Great. Are there other questions? Do we need to get on a bus?
Road trip.
Because I'm not doing it.
Road trip.
Okay, great. So there are no questions. Of course, stand by.
Sure.
So, do you, will you make your BZA comments, please? I think that, different than the other appeals that we heard today, when there's something from the Board of Zoning Appeals is really technical. And I'm going to ask Ms. Tierney to just be clear what we're, the public hearing is about today so that we stay on, on course. It's easy to start talking about different things than just the appeal. So I know I put you on the spot.
You did. That's okay. This is a public hearing. We're considering an appeal to this decision of Board of Zoning Appeals. So the Board of Zoning Appeals granted a request. In order to grant a request, in order to reverse the Board of Zoning Appeals, you're going to have to state how the Board of Zoning Appeals aired. So that's the focus of your conversation today.
Okay. Okay. So what we'll do is hear from the appellants, our people who are opposed to the decision of the BZA. And again, we're looking for errors in the, in the testimony. So we will start our public hearing now. Welcome.
Council President Brennemo, Council members, my name is Brian Alton. My address is 951 Grand Avenue. I am here today representing four property owners who are the appellants in this case. You will hear from them and they will give you detailed reasons why they, the Board of Zoning Appeals made an error. The owner of the property at Five Heather Place wants to split off his garage from his house. And this is an unusual request and requires the city to approve a lot split. The city cannot approve a lot split if the zoning code requirements would not be met. That is why the owner has applied for a variance of 19.9 feet in order for the existing garage to become a house. So then the structure that has always been a garage with an apartment would become a small house with a large street car garage and virtually no backyard. The existing house then would have no garage and no on-street parking, excuse me, off-street parking. The Board of Zoning Appeals said okay to that, but the Board of Zoning Appeals also approved another variance for this new garage that would now be needed in order to have off-street parking. These neighbors have felt that the Board of Zoning Appeals made an error and we've appealed. In order to grant the variance, the Board of Zoning Appeals had to make findings or conclusions. And we think that their findings were not factual. They were just conclusory statements. Specifically, I went through in the appeal application that was filed, the six different findings that are supposed to be made. And briefly, I will go through five of them. The variances are not in harmony with the general purposes and attend to the zoning code. So these variances, according to the staff report and the BZA findings, would increase housing choices. Well, that's not true. They would not increase any housing choices, nor would they lessen congestion in the public streets by providing off-street parking. To the contrary, they're taking away off-street parking for the main principal structure. The result of that, again, is that there's no off-street parking for the main principal structure and the zoning code in section 63.207 requires a home to have off-street parking. And further, there's no evidence that the variances would conserve and improve property values. In fact, the opposite could be true if a valuable and historic property is split. This property is in the Historic Hill Preservation District and as has been noted, Heritage Preservation Commission approval would be required for any new structure. The second, secondly, the variances are not consistent with the comprehensive plan. Strategy 2.1 of the housing plan is applicable. It says that the stated action is to continue to enforce city codes and preserve properties designated historic. And also Strategy 4, the Historic Preservation Chapter, is to preserve and protect historic resources. Again, that's, so that, the finding of the Board of Zoning Appeals was contrary to that and incorrect. Thirdly.
Johnson, can I just ask you?
Certainly.
I'm looking at a Google map, so I could be off-base here, but on this, the new, when you're talking about the, are you referring to the Five Heather Place as the primary structure that will not have a garage that they're going to have to add?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Because the other carriage house has a garage attached. Okay.
So this, this is Five Heather Place.
Okay. I just wasn't, now since we're talking them both primarily, okay.
So here's Five Heather Place. And to the left of it is the, the three-car garage carriage house.
All right. Thank you.
And another photograph shows on the right side, the Five Heather Place, just the corner of it. And on the left side, the corner of the carriage house garage. And in the middle then is the area where the new garage, if it was to be built, would be placed if the Board of Zoning Appeals variance is upheld.
Thank you. Thank you.
So the applicant has also not established that there are practical difficulties in complying with the zoning code. Splitting off the three-car garage from the May House creates non-conformities, is not a use that is using property in a reasonable manner. And then lastly, the plight of the landowner is not due to circumstances unique to the property. And these circumstances were created by the landowner's decision to create this lot split, creates the plight, and there is no hardship. Finally, with respect to the garage variance, the BZA granted a setback variance of three feet for a potential new garage to be built if the lot split is granted. But the only information about the proposed new garage was that little sketch that you showed. There was no site plan, there was no detailed elevations or anything at all. As a matter of fact, the applicant's application didn't even ask for a garage variance. And he stated at the Board of Zoning Appeals that it was a tentative first look at a footprint that was not prepared for the BZA discussion. And it was created a while back as a placeholder for the purpose of subdividing. Without a specific proposal, the BZA should not have considered even this variance application and certainly not granted it. I'll let, thank you very much. I'll next let you hear from the neighbors. Thank you.
Thanks. So we are going to hear from four property owners. And I just, we, I think we let the clock run a little bit when Mr. Alton was answering a question of mine. I just, you have about 10 minutes between the four of you, which goes so fast. So I just want to give you a heads up.
Well, we'll try to make it quick.
Okay. We'll give you a little lenience, too, but not too much.
Thank you, Council Member Brennemo and Council members. My name is Scott Endress and I live at One Heather Place, directly across the street from Five Heather Place or Five and Seven Heather Place. I live in a very, I chose my home for various reasons. I've lived in St. Paul for 23 years, all of those years in historic homes, historic homes for a reason, because I love them. And I love being in a historic district for various reasons. I chose my home because I fell in love with it decades ago on a walk on that tiny little curved path back there, knowing that my home was designed by Cass Gilbert, for Cass Gilbert. It was his home, which is very cool, very unique, as is Five and Seven Heather Place across the street. Both are wonderful, wonderful parts of the city, as well as other historic homes in the district. Such a unique little nook and it's, it's, it's pretty fabulous, being both architecturally and historically significant. Let's see. Owning historic properties, of course, comes with great responsibility, honoring the past, living in the present, but also making the right decisions today that will be the best for the future, the future of the residents in the historic neighborhood, but also the, the history buffs, the architecture geeks and all the people on Segway tours every single day of the summer that pass by Heather Place. It's the biggest traffic that we see back there is the number of Segways on that little corner of the, of our world. And I wouldn't want to change any of it. I feel that the variances approved for Five Heather Place at the BZA, by the BZA, will considerably, considerably alter the character of the area. For the carriage house specifically, a lot split variance creates a non-conforming structure. There is reasons why the city code has those setback requirements. With a five-foot backyard, there's basically no backyard. And my concern is all the things that people do in their backyards will happen in the front yard. So outdoor kitchens and playsets and garbage bins and recycle bins all get pushed to the front. And that's something that I think is at least under, something that should be considered. In addition to that, I feel like what we're doing is somewhat of, what could be done is somewhat of an unprecedented situation in historic, in any of the historic districts in the city of St. Paul. For Five Heather Place, the addition of a garage sets another unprecedented precedent. First, the garage to be built in the, it would be the first garage to ever be built in the front yard of, of a property in the city of St. Paul, which I think is a historic district in the city of St. Paul. And I think that should be noted. And I think that that in and of itself sort of sets a new precedent, which I think is concerning to me. When I, when I bought my property, I was assuming that I was looking at the front yard. My, my door opens up to the front yard of Five and Seven Heather Place. I never thought that there'd ever be a chance of a garage being built in a, in what already is a huge facade of structure, a couple hundred feet of structure, actually, going from the carriage house from Seven Heather Place all the way through to the skyway to the Five Heather Place with a break in the action, which is that action, that break that you saw, and then the large carriage house that was inspired by Clarence Johnson design and was originally attached to 500 Grand Hill when there was another historic property there that burned early, earlier in last century.
I just want to let you know that we're, now we're down to about five minutes.
One quick last thing.
Okay.
With the addition of that garage, it completely will add on to that massive facade. And one of the reasons why Cass Gilbert selected that lot is he had expansive use of the river and all. and all of a sudden, for the people that come back there on their Segway tour, or the residents that live in that area, there won't be expansive view of anything other than solid structure from one way to the other. So, thank you for your time, and I'll give some time to my other neighbors.
Thank you. It goes so fast. I know when people get up there, it's like, I only have one minute, and five minutes go by like the wind, so.
Yeah.
So, thank you very much.
Of course.
Good evening, Madam President, Councilmembers. My name is Joseph Westwater. I live at 520 Grand Hill, which is across the street and down the block from the, from the property in question. I live in a house that was built in 1894. It's a Cass Gilbert house. You don't live in my neighborhood very long before you realize you're just occupying these structures temporarily and keeping them for the generations that come after us. And that's really why we're all here tonight. And we won't all speak, but I'd just like to show up hands of my neighbors who are here in opposition to this. The, I'd like to speak with particularity to the second variance. I feel very strongly that the Board of Zoning Appeals, with all due respect to the staff and the hard work that they put into this, erred in granting this variance to allow for the placement of a new garage in what can only be described as a vaguely situated spot in the front yard. As you can tell from the, from the plats, there really isn't a side yard on this, basically it's either front or back. I also think that one of the zoning code variance requirements that is required to be met is pertinent for this discussion, and I quote, "The plight of the landowner must be due to circumstances unique to the property, not created by the landowner." In this situation, basically what we're talking about is allowing a lot split and a first variance, which then creates an economic incentive to sell a piece of property. And then, the second variance allows that applicant to essentially reconstruct what he just sold at economic gain. Furthermore, I believe that in allowing the second variance, the Board of Zoning Appeals erred in allowing what is really the longstanding and historic front of the house on Heather to be arbitrarily and somehow magically rendered the back of the house, and thus appropriate for the placement of a new garage. Finally, I also think it's incorrect to find that the true rear of the house was somehow too difficult a construction site to accommodate a new garage. I believe this is belied by the fact that the connected next-door house on Heather actually has an in-ground swimming pool in its backyard. Indeed, the entire bluff itself on which the subject houses now stand was constructed 100 years ago by hauling in many cubic yards of filled dirt, and I would submit that the engineers of today are up to the task. Finally, and it's been spoken to, I believe that there's been inadequate coordination between the BZA and the HPC, and I'm afraid that unfortunately, the HPC will be essentially dealing with something that's already finished by the time they get a chance to, to deal with this, when their oversight should more appropriately have been earlier and more robustly applied to this matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
President and Councilmembers, my name is Pat Donovan. I live at 514 Grand Hill. My point is simple. It is simply that all of this has been created by a, the new homeowner wanting to subdivide their lot and sell a part of it, and then, all the variance that come out of this are caused by them accommodating this lot split. And as I was told by the BCA, that economic interest was not to be a primary driver behind variances, and it strikes me that's precisely what the case is.
Thank you, sir. Can you just sign into that ledger before you sit down? Thank you. Are you the closer?
Hi, I'm Chris, I am.
Welcome.
I'm Chrissy Donovan, Pat Donovan's wife. We, our property abuts to the north side of Five Heather Place. I'm not gonna, I have other things to say, but they've already been said. And I think the wisdom of St. Paul and Historic Preservation to have very strong guidelines on what needs to occur so that the nature of the historical can be preserved. In fact, we had the opportunity to work with them 20 years ago. Not an easy process, but it's an important one to go through to really evaluate and to get it so that it is, stays, as Jay mentioned, concurrent for many years to come. So my, my feeling is that the whole property, prior to any variances or lot splits, should be looked at by Historic Preservation before any decisions are made. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, we will now go to people who are here to, this always messes me up, so, who opposed the, the, the appeal? Oppose the appeal?
Support the initial.
Yeah, okay, that's, support the initial application, how about that? Well, we'll work on that for next time. All right, come on up.
I'm the property owner. My name is Jeff Arundel. How much time will our group get?
15 minutes. Up to 15 minutes.
Okay. I'm gonna amend my remarks because there's, part of what we're gonna talk about's gonna take more time.
And I think it's just important, as Ms. Tierney said, to just, we're talking about the appeal itself, so, you know.
Yes, and I wanna say that, very simply, we think zoning did their job, and we think that the idea that the variances had to be vetted first before we went to the expense of creating build plans, because the build plans would be irrelevant if the variances couldn't be granted. So, when Jerome worked with the HPC to determine the sequence that this was gonna happen, and we believe that that made sense to us. Let's see if the variances are viable before we get into the expense of making the plans, because the plans and what will be built were going to be subsequently vetted by the HPC and the city anyways. No permits can be granted until the HPC and the city get to have their say about what's gonna be made. And so, we followed those rules. We're new to the St. Paul, we moved here in October. St. Paul's an old city. It's a city that's filled with variances, it's filled with encroachments, it's filled with carriage houses that have been separated from their primary buildings that they originally were built for. There's irony in the moment because we have the lot that you've seen, and some of the appellantents here have expanded their garages, other people in the neighborhood have built new garages that have led to encroachments on our lot. Variances were granted in those cases. We don't believe there's anything about the variances in this case that are unique or different than variances that have been granted at any other times. Subsequent to what happens today, we've made a tentative purchase agreement to sell the carriage house to 502 Grand Hill, which is the building that is closest to it, because our intention was always, once we thought about it, to build a garage that resonated with the design of Five Heather and resonated with the garage that existed for our sister house, Seven Heather. And the existing carriage house for Five Heather, we believe, it's a fine old building, it's set very far from the house, and it aesthetically doesn't match the house, and we don't need more bedrooms and bathrooms anyways. So our intention was to try to get that building to someone who cared about it and would care for it, and to build a new structure that resonated with Five Heather, subject to all the approvals that the HPC and the city would need to grant in order to do that. That's the sum of what I wanna say. I do think we wanna address very clearly the idea that zoning believes that the front yard of Five Heather Place is fronting on Grand Avenue. And in order to explain why we think that's correct, I wanna invite Jim Sazovic to speak, and you probably all know Jim, he's a property historian, a house historian, and so we prepared this quick presentation to explain why we think zoning was correct in saying that Grand Hill is, in fact, the front yard.
Thank you.
Good evening, Councilmembers, President. Jim Sazovic, St. Paul. I've been before you for 50 years now this year, and so I know many of you, but the new Councilmembers that I don't know, I just wanted to do a quick introduction. Jeff is new, new to the city. I've been actively involved in preservation for 50 years, over 50 years now, helped organize the Heritage Preservation Commission, worked in every national historic district, every HPC district in St. Paul, every neighborhood, historic buildings in every neighborhood, more, more national registered nominations in the state of Minnesota than any other living, breathing person in the state. So my background in preservation came in handy when Jeff, who cares deeply about preservation, stark preservation, he operates a restaurant business from the oldest commercial building in the city of Minneapolis, older than our oldest commercial building, which has just been restored in St. Paul. But to understand this property, you have to understand the story of the property, and it's a beautiful story, and it's a beautiful Jewish family, one of our early pioneer Jewish families that built the two houses there. And once you understand that, you'll understand the front yard from the backyard. Heather Place is the backyard. The auxiliary building is on a different street, street, it's called Floral Street, just like the Cass Gilbert house was built at 71 Floral. Floral Street become, became Heather Drive when they changed the name, so that's, that's some clarification. I went to the preliminary hearing, and I heard so much folklore and crazy stories and everything, and I said, "We've gotta straighten this out." Folks, from the time the building was first announced, 110 years ago this past month, 100, I gotta get my bearings here, when I put, oh, there, good. Where's, where's, oh, so I can see it. 110 years ago, our St. Paul Dispatch announced that the Goodkind Brothers, who are operating Manheimer Store, were building, and look where they took the picture from, right there, on Oakland, Old Oakland, looking up at the beautiful hill, this beautiful bluff that was gonna be built on, when the architects, Reed and Stem, Alan Stem is living a block from the site while he's designing the building, when they published their plans for the Goodkind house, again, let me read the caption if you can, it says, "This picture shows the front view of the two handsome residents that will be erected during the coming summer," and it talks about all the wonderful details, and there's the house from its front elevation. I knew I was gonna do that. So then, then you go into the construction phase, and different magazines picked up the story about the house, it was such a fantastic house, and you said you're familiar with the area, and it is, it takes your breath away. But remember, you're looking at it from the front, always, and believe it or not, someone did take a wonderful construction view from the back of the house on Heather, and this is the back, just to show you the scale of this house. Five is on the left here, my left, and then Seven, and then the connecting Skyway that they talked about, which, by the way, Reed and Stem did not plan initially, it was not part of the original contract. And then we go on to, the house is now being finished, and you see all the beautiful retaining walls and gorgeous landscaping, and all of that was for a purpose. Tilly Rosenfeld Goodkind said, "I need a place to plant my flowers." She was a crazy gardener, wonderful crazy gardener, involved in, across the west side with Neighborhood House, all these agencies, dealing with the poor, dealing with all these needy people all over. She would go to a funeral and deliver flowers to people that didn't have flowers at their funerals, poor people. Now, Reed and Stem themselves publish this, because the house is now, everybody's looking at it, it's in magazines all across the nation. Residents is Benjamin William Goodkind, Williams, by the way, is number five. Okay, what does it say on the caption? South front, south front of the house, on that caption. Notice the house, again, now this is the front of number five, and look to the right there, and I got a little red arrow pointing at it. Again, I can't see these very good.
You can see the arrow.
So right there, look at the little red arrow. We're talking about where Mr. Arundel wants to build his garage, this little tiny garage. When this building was built, it was surrounded by all kinds of other buildings. Things change, these historic districts and historic sites evolve. This neighborhood's been evolving for over 150 years. That is the structure, a great big barn that literally towered over the wall, that is his retaining wall on the side of his property, and you see that, and it was the barn and stable for the Heather family's home. Heather Place isn't just because it's Heather, it's the Heather family that built their beautiful estate there. This home survived until 1956, when it was demolished for the concrete apartment condo structure that's there today. It was built in 1873, by the way, by the Heather family. Tilly did her magic. I don't know how many gardeners are here, but she went, she did her magic. Look at her front yard. Look at her front yard, and it's just absolutely amazing. I just met Mr. Arundel's gardeners today out there, who are working to restore much of what you're seeing there. Clayton Allen and David Dunningston have done a great job on their side, and in fact, they did build a pool. They built that pool in their front yard, but guess what? Nobody sees the pool except them. Pool is completely invisible when you're standing here, you don't even know what's there. So they did, they did do that, and they got permission to do that. Here's Tilly, by the way, I knew you'd wanna see her. I get excited. You know why I get excited about this? Women's history is not written, is not written. And way back in the 70s, when it became popular, I started talking about it, and Tilly is a hero, she's an extraordinary hero, but here's what's really sad. She was out to do one of her charity runs, June 30th, 1915, five years after her husband built that beautiful big home for her. She was asphyxiated by a gas leak in the house, died in her house, asphyxiated by a gas leak.
I-
I've done it.
I love, I mean, this is really, Dave and Claire are friends of mine, and I know why their cat is Mr. Goodkind now.
So, so now, Tilly is buried right there from her front yard. Her funeral is held in the front yard, right, right in this little niche right here. Her family, all standing on the balcony, overlooking all of her beautiful work. Here's the back of the house, just off to the left of this view, back in that little niche, is where the new garage is gonna be built. If you have any questions, again, you go in the house, interior plans, right there at Heather, rear hall, rear hall, on Reed and Stem's plan, right here. What does it say? Rear hall, that's, that's facing Heather. All the servants quarters, servants halls, all in the back. Second floor, same thing, rear hall, rear hall. You can see that Tilly's work has been somewhat obliterated. Now there's a chance to get it back. We all love that spot, how beautiful it is, and we're hoping that it can continue to be. One more.
One quick thing to add. I'm Christopher Keith, I'm a research historian, I live in St. Paul. Here's a really early plat map of the property in 1916, and it shows you exactly, this, this is still, part of this is the same structure today, it's been altered and changed. This pattern over the building here means it's a greenhouse, and the key in the, in the beginning of the map will tell you that. And then, this is a dwelling structure. Jeff had, Jeff had mentioned that there's a contract right now to sell it to the property at 502. Here is that property at 502, and then here is his home here, so you can see the distance. It's, it's almost closer to that, that property. There's a great divide between him and his property here, so you can see the street name, you know, again, changed. This is a separate street from Heather Place, this is Heather Drive today, but it was Floral. Floral was originally platted through the property here, and you can see that, that it was vacated shortly after the Goodkinds had bought the property, replatted that whole neighborhood there, and it's called Goodkind Terrace. And it's called Goodkind Terrace. Became Heather's addition to the Terrace Park addition of St. Paul. So it's a very confusing property, it's been platted three times. And this is a very good comprehensive map that shows.
1913 is when Tilly had her greenhouse built. That's great, Chris. Tilly built a greenhouse and a garage, and then in 1920, that was greatly remodeled. I told you she had died in 1915. And, thank you. Any questions? Chris has spent, I don't know, over 20 hours looking at every legal document. I've been studying this neighborhood for over 40 years. I can answer any question about any structure.
Every deed and mortgage.
Every deed, mortgage, and lien, and every possible legal document that's ever been filed in the city. That was at a request from Mr. Rundle because he cares. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Prince has a question for you.
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Sazovic. Thank you for your presentation. Is there an intention now to restore that entrance onto Grand Hill? On Grand Avenue, I mean?
That's a really good question. Even though that was designed, even though the entrance in, where's the photograph right here? Yeah, good. Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. Right here, that was actually never opened to the public. It was a vacated street, and it was never really open. And they asked that it be vacated, and there's a gate there. There's always been a gate. And so it's been part of the property, and not always well-maintained, various owners, past owners. But the Helen and Dunningston property at number seven has been greatly improved since they bought the property. And Mr. Rundle is already busy. Today, the gardeners were in the yard when we went by, and they're working to establish. One of the things you have to remember too, why was that house focused out in that southerly direction? You walk in there and walk up on that balcony, and it takes your breath away. It absolutely, the view of the downtown, the whole river valley, that is what they were showing there. And it's just amazing, absolutely amazing property. So they're busy improving it already, improving those grounds. And by the way, the garage that you're going to see in a future city council hearing is beautifully designed to match the number seven garage, which was built in 1912.
And Ms. Prince, are we, is this a BZA question?
See you.
Yeah, actually it is. Because what we're talking about here is that we are allowing a 20, 19, almost 20-foot variance on the carriage house. And that is an issue here. So I'm wondering, from a historic standpoint, do you have anything to add about that?
I do have something to add. There has to be give and take. We have lost extraordinary important buildings because everybody's going by the law. And I think Mr. Rundle even mentioned already, you go any historic district, any neighborhood, there's variances galore. We have a whole, here's number seven's garage. We're talking here so you can see, and Mr. Rundle's garage is designed similarly to this. Everywhere you go in a city, every historic district, and I've been involved in every historic district, including the first historic district, all that research under my part, that's me, first National Historic District, first HPC district. And yes, this variance is important. But here's something else you have to realize. I'm just talking about Mr. Rundle's property. Because when I looked, and I couldn't even believe the numbers, okay, 341 feet deep is what his lot is. From down there on Oakland to the back, to the side of the auxiliary building, 341 feet. There's nobody in the whole area that has a lot this size. It's 128 up by the auxiliary building, and when you get down to Grand Avenue, 288 feet. That's not number seven, that's just him, 288 foot width. And by the way, very, very steep hill, which has been there from the beginning. It showed in my first picture, the whole hill was always there. They picked that block for that reason.
Okay. I guess my issue is that if we grant a 20-foot variance on that new, newly separated property, a carriage house and garage, we're forcing all of the backyard activity into the front yard in a very historic neighborhood where that has not existed. And that's one comment I'd like to make. And the other thing is that when you talk about how, what the original intention was of the property and where it faced and so forth, the other thing that you admit is that over time, the way we use properties changes. And so if indeed the front yard is toward Grand Hill, there's a swimming pool in the front yard, which we wouldn't normally do. Now, in the case, but it's out of sight of the rest of the historic neighborhood. But at Lot A, there is no room for any kind of backyard activity, except in the front yard in a very historic neighborhood.
What I would argue with that is historic precedence in this case. Number 66 Floral, although built as a greenhouse and a garage originally, after Tilly's death in 1920, Reuben Warner, who bought Mr. Rundle's house, used that building for chauffeur. And once people stopped having chauffeurs and groundskeepers and gardeners, that house was rented, and it has been rented and rented and rented. And we have a whole long list of people. And so the activity has been in it before it was even a historic district. There's been activities, there've been whole families living in that auxiliary structure already. It's not a big change. It's not a big change. There've been families, there've been students, there was a female artist in the building for a long time. All kinds of people have been in that structure. That is only going to be separated from this very, very large lot if it is proved. So if there's any more questions, I can answer. Yes.
No. I'm really sorry. We've, I mean, honestly, I
Took a lot of time, I know.
Your enthusiasm is infectious, and we've given you some latitude because we were off, a bit off the topic. And so I wanted, I was going to ask Ms. Naker, she's eager to say something. But I did want to say, I appreciate what you just said about the house as being used currently as a house. The concerns that Ms. Prince is bringing up have been in place for 100 years.
Yes, and it is. So the auxiliary structure in 1913
As a rental property.
Remodeled in 1920, the greenhouse disappears, families in there. By the way, brand-new water service to the house in 1995, as recently as 1995, for people living in that structure. It's not just a garage, it's a livable house, and it's going to make somebody a nice home.
Right. But I just, I think, because it's called the carriage house, and because the line is changing, I think just making it clear that it's being and has been used as a house for 100
Yes, for a very long time.
Okay, Ms. Naker.
Thank you. I move to close the public hearing.
Ms. Naker moves to close the public hearing. Is there any further discussion on that? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion prevails. Ms. Naker.
Thank you. And I do really appreciate the historical lesson, and I find myself completely enchanted by it, and it feels like now we're going to go back to much more mundane matters, but really appreciate it. I was wondering, Mr. Benner, if you could come back up and respond to one of the statements that the appellant's made that had to do with the variance application not even mentioning the second variance, not even asking for that second variance related to the proposed garage. I thought that that had been requested, and I just wanted to check my understanding of that.
Mr. Benner.
Thank you, Council, Council President. I do also want to applaud you, that was really impressive. So thank you for that history lesson. To get to Ms. Naker's question, in the appeal, Mr. Alton pointed out that the public was not properly notified, as you mentioned, regarding the garage. And I do want to say that that's half true. The initial notice that went out to the public did not include the language for the garage. Staff did catch that within the 10-day matter and did issue a new appeal, or excuse me, a new notification regarding the garage, which was sent on March 13th. The, this notice would need to have been sent out 10 days prior to the March 25th hearing, which in here was sent out 12 days prior. So the city did properly notify the residents within an equi amount of time regarding both variances, one for the principal structure, or the proposed principal structure, and then the other one for the proposed garage.
Ms. Naker.
Thank you. And then only because we spent a lot of time talking about it, I just want to clarify, what is the relevance of where the front yard is to this discussion?
So this is the fun, tough one. I was waiting for it. So let's chat about that. Okay, so going to give you some, a little lesson about what I'm more familiar with. This is the zoning code. So the zoning code has a definition, various definitions for lots. One definition in particular that relates to this property is called a through lot. And so a through lot is a property that has two street frontages. And one can establish what a front yard should be for zoning purposes. So as we've heard here from the gracious history presentation, and also from the neighbors as well, that Grand Av, so in this particular property, Oakland Avenue, which is now the new Grand Avenue, is a front yard, as we saw from the photos, and also Heather Drive is considered a front yard. So we have two frontages, Heather Drive and also Grand Avenue. In order to make this lot split work, zoning staff and also working with PD staff felt comfortable and actually felt that was the most pragmatic thing to do, was to call Grand Avenue the front for zoning purposes. Now, let's take a step back from the zoning, and let's look at, for what has been looked at from a historical sense, since the property went from Floral Avenue to Heather Drive. Heather Drive, or excuse me, Heather Place has been, for historic reasons, the front yard for this property. So again, this property has two front yards. It has Grand Avenue as a front yard, and also Heather Drive. For historic purposes, and also to align with HPC standards, we felt that it was appropriate to keep Heather Drive as the front yard for that particular reason. Excuse me, thank you, Mr. D. Heather Place, not Heather Drive, Heather Place.
Thank you. Mr. Tolbert.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Just because we've heard a lot of testimony and a lot of historical things from Cass Gilbert to Tilly to everything, could you just reframe the issue that we need to decide here today? Thank you.
Councilmember Tolbert, Council President, Councilmembers, yes. So the two things that we need to look at today, did the Board of Zoning Appeals err in deciding that a variance should be granted for a building that's been in this place for over 100 years? Could that be considered a rear yard? And this property's never had a rear yard. Any activity that would take place now would also go to the front, as people mentioned, the garages or trash pickup, that would always go to the front, so I'm not quite sure how that's relevant. And also for the garage, the placement of the garage. The HPC staff and I felt that this was the most appropriate location to place a garage, as we learned, placing it back here, and what would, sounds like would be, every storied garden space would not be a good place for it. So, and also, that is a side yard, it's not a front yard, as most of the neighbors pointed out. For zoning purposes, I'll just give a quick, what a front yard this property would look like. So this dash line here would be considered what is front yard. Anything to the east, to the right side of this, would be considered a side yard. So this garage is not located in a front yard, it is located in a side yard for zoning purposes.
Thank you. Ms. Naker?
No question.
Ms. Prince, did you have other questions? Okay. Okay. Okay, Ms. Naker.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Benner. I think one thing we can all agree on, no matter which side of this issue we're on, is that there's a lot of love for history in this room right now. And I want to thank everyone who came out to testify tonight, and folks who submitted testimony beforehand via email. I do hear the concerns of neighbors about the historic preservation and the need to preserve and protect historic resources. And I can understand the frustration, that it seems like the BZA was making decisions about variances prior to HPC review and approval, and that the other order of operations might be preferable. But we can't determine which applications come in first to us as a city. We do have a 60-day clock that we have to follow once those applications come in. And I don't think that there was anything in the BZA decision that took a stand, one way or another, on the historic preservation aspects of this. I think that is a conversation that is going to be had at the HPC table after this decision is made. And as many of you know firsthand, and as some of you pointed out tonight, I think we can trust that the HPC will do a very thorough job of that, as it does in the neighborhood generally. I read the appeal really carefully, as well as the submissions that were sent in in advance. And I see and hear a lot of difference of opinion, but I don't see anything that rises to the level of error on the part of the BZA in terms of fact-finding or procedure. I noted the questions of whether or not this actually increases housing choices, whether or not it actually lessens parking congestion, depending on whether or not the new garage is built, increasing off-street parking, whether or not this is using a property in a reasonable manner, I think is reasonable, people can differ on that. And then whether or not it alters the essential character of the neighborhood, that question, essential character, I think is more subjective. But I don't think that any of those disagreements, again, show that the BZA erred. And I was a little bit concerned about an error in procedure beforehand about the second variance not actually having been requested, but I think my mind has been settled that it was officially requested and that notice was given in enough time with the 10-day period. So with all of that, I would move to deny the appeal.
Is there any discussion on the motion from Ms. Naker? Ms. Prince?
Yeah, I, with all due respect to my colleague, I feel that the lot split is indeed being done. I can't think of any other reason it is being done other than for economic reasons, which is a reason to deny the variance. It is creating a nonconformity, it's creating a principal dwelling without a backyard. It is, the plight of the landowner is clearly created by the landowner in this case, who didn't need to split the lot, would have continued to have a garage. So I think that it's clear, and to President Brenmon's point about that the property has been rented for decades, and its front yard may have been used as a backyard. I think it's a whole different thing when somebody is spending what will be hundreds of thousands of dollars to purchase that home, and then without a backyard, wanting to be able to build the deck or the outside patios or whatever, that will substantially impact the nature of that historic neighborhood. I really appreciated the comment from one of the neighbors, that the current homeowners see themselves as temporary stewards of a phenomenal historic resource. And I think what we are doing by granting a 20-foot variance is we are definitely changing the way that residential lot will be used going forward, and it will impact that neighborhood. So I will have to vote no in this case.
Is there any other discussion? All right, seeing none, Ms. Naker has moved to approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion prevails.
Six in favor, one opposed, being Councilmember Prince. The motion of intent, the appeal is denied.
Ms. Naker.
I just wanted to declare that I moved to deny.
Okay, sorry. Okay, thank you. All right, that brings us to the end of our agenda. Is there anything else to come before us this evening? Seeing none, we are adjourned.